Hi, I'm Bob Butler from KCBS Radio. Welcome to a forum of candidates running for three seats on the Pittsburgh City Council. Today's forum is sponsored by the Contra Costa County Elections Division, Contra Costa Television, the West County and Diablo Valley League of Women Voters. We're recording these roundtables here in the studios of Contra Costa Television with assistance from the cities of Concord, Richmond, and Walnut Creek. The five candidates for three positions are Dion Adams, Wolf Kroski, Chanelles Scales Preston, and Angelica Lopez, and Sonia Shepherd. Sonia couldn't be here with us today. We do lots before the show to determine the speaking order, so we'll begin with Dion. Dion, tell us about yourself and why you want to do this.
Well, thank you for the invitation. I'm Dion Adams. I am part of a fourth-generation family in Pittsburgh where I grew up, and I'm a second-generation Pittsburgh High School graduate. I attended Pittsburgh High School and our public schools in Pittsburgh, and I just, I love my city. And so, growing up, I have very fond memories of how Pittsburgh loved me. And we have a strong culture and a way about us where we give back. So, I went to school and college, and I went away. And I started a career in public policy and diversity, equity, inclusion. And there's lots of things that I've done in my career. And when I moved back to Pittsburgh, I thought about it and said to myself, "This is a way I can give back to my city." And so, I have a passion for our people. I have a passion for our businesses. I have a passion for our youth. And I want to be there at the place where I can help when we're developing public policy and different things for our city to make it better. I have agency to do that, and so that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Wolf, you're with the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Isn't that a big enough job already?
It is. It definitely is a big job. But one of the reasons that I wanted to run for council was to help build a stronger bridge between policy and our business community. And in the state of California, it's not known as being business-friendly. Can't control what happens at the state, but in Pittsburgh, I definitely feel that there's an opportunity for me to elevate the voice of the business community, but more importantly, elevate the voice of, "I have six kids," and making sure that we look at what we're doing for the youth, what we're doing for seniors, and most importantly, what we're doing for residents as a whole. Because in our current world, a lot of residents just feel that they don't have a voice, that they don't have an opportunity, they don't have a seat at the table. And I want to help bring them to the table so that we can do what's best for our city. There's been a lot of great things that have taken place throughout the history of Pittsburgh, but it's now time to take it to that next level. And we are, as a nation, as a state, and it will trickle down to the city, headed for some rough waters, both, you know, policy-wise and through the economy. And so, I think having people that have traveled those waters and come from the business world to help bring that lens to the council is really important because there are going to be decisions that need to be made. And having views from as many diverse places in the city as possible is really important.
Chanelles, you're already on the council, and you want to stay on the council. I know sometimes that's a thankless job. Why do you want to continue doing it?
Yes, because Pittsburgh is just home. It's a special place. I have dedicated my life to public service for over 20 years. As the vice mayor now, I have committed to spending time in my community, being on the ground, listening to constituents and what they want and what the needs of the community are. And my time on council, I have really focused on, you know, how do I elevate and uplift the quality of life for our residents in Pittsburgh? And whether that's through public safety, that's through youth programs. I'm really passionate about youth programs because as a young child growing up in not a great neighborhood, those programs helped raise me and make me the person I am today. So, I've really been passionate about those things, as well as road and public safety, and making sure we get more businesses to our communities so people stay in our community and enjoy it in the evenings and the weekends. So, I'm looking forward to continue to do those things. I'm happy about the things that we have done and to see those things come to fruition and just to continue to move Pittsburgh forward.
Thanks. Angelica, you're an attorney. I understand that you do a lot with youth. Why do you want to be on the council?
You know, that question really hits home. A lot of you don't know, I actually come from a background where, at one point, I was homeless. At one point, I was a single mom that didn't know if I could keep my son anymore. At one point, I struggled with mental illness severely, and the community resources were not there for me. By the grace of God, He pulled me out of that, and I was able to put myself through law school as a single mom. And when I look to the leaders, I don't really see anyone that looks like me from my background. And I know there's a lot of people hurting in our city that feel the same way. So, for me, it's more than that. If I made it there with all my struggles, I want all my brothers and sisters within Pittsburgh to also be able to achieve something that great, pull ourselves out of the ashes, because we are a diamond in the rough. And I want my story to inspire others. So, I don't want to lead just because I made it. I want to lead because I come from the same place.
Every city has challenges. What do you think Pittsburgh's biggest challenges are?
One of the biggest challenges is lack of motivation within our residents. I think that you can only help so much. You can only help people that want to be helped. But without motivation, right, without that passion to want to have a better city, it's not a four-member job. We all need to work together, get our hands dirty, go to work every single day to be able to achieve that. So, lack of motivation. Being a family law attorney that serves Contra Costa County, there's a lot of domestic violence going on that a lot of people are not even speaking out about. Our children, our youth, they're suffering, right? If our youth are suffering, they're the people of tomorrow. So, if we're already not taking care of our youth, our city is on the train to more decay. But if we can stop that collectively as a city, we can achieve a change that will affect tomorrow. And it's not going to be easy. It's going to take a lot of hard work, but it's doable.
Dion, if I remember correctly, you worked for PG&E for a long time.
Yes.
How is that experience going to help you meet the challenges facing Pittsburgh? And can you talk about those challenges?
Sure. So, at PG&E, I work in regulatory. I worked in regulatory for quite a while where I had cases that were brought before the California Public Utilities Commission. And in that role, I work with a lot of stakeholders that share their interests of things that they want to see happen for projects that we're bringing forth and trying to meet the demand of our customers on the grid. And so, in that role, what has been helpful is I got exposure to how public policy happens and then how to actually implement it, and then to evaluate it, to make changes, to improve it. And so, for me, that experience that I have, in addition to, is also working diversity, equity, and inclusion at PG&E. And so, I'm always looking at how to make sure that you're including everyone that something is going to touch and making the best impact, short-term and long-term. And so, in serving on the council, I can bring that lens to the work for our city because we are at a place where we've done some really great things, and there's more ahead of us. And so, there's a lot of people you have to think about. There's a lot of infrastructure that we need, and there's a lot of shifts in mindset and education and awareness so that people can buy in and to also reduce fear that people might have for change. Because change is here, like our city is changing, and our demographics are changing. How do you bridge that together so that our city continues to shine the way that it has? We're a very diverse city, and we love that about that. In Pittsburgh, that's something that we're very proud of. And so, as we're changing, we want to continue to be diverse, but we also want to continue to think about each other and help each other and consider each other in the solutions that we're proposing and implementing.
Wolf, you mentioned taking the city to the next level and addressing the many challenges that are coming. What are those challenges?
So, the challenges that people don't want to talk about, which I've seen a couple of times as a lifelong resident of Pittsburgh, is that a city like Pittsburgh, a bulk of its revenue comes from property taxes and sales taxes. And so, when things are going great, the money flows in. But when you have a drop in consumer spending, when you have property values decreasing, those funds decrease. So, we have to look at, how can we do things differently? For example, when you look at the gas tax, nobody likes the gas tax, but, "Well, we want everybody to go electric vehicles." Well, then, how are we going to fund road repairs because we're based on gas tax? So, as a city, what things are we doing that just don't work when it comes to revenue? And more importantly, how can we be more efficient in using the revenue to deal with road repair, taking care of our parks? Because, you know, everybody in Pittsburgh, regardless of makeup, wants a clean, safe, prosperous place to live and to have their family. So, leadership has gotten the city to this point. Well, now, how do we get to the next point? And so, I feel that bringing in a business lens will be able to help get that there, get the city there, to look at, how do we attract? You know, people say we want to have businesses in Pittsburgh. Well, the economy has changed. The businesses that we say we want either don't exist anymore, they're leaving the state. So, how do we bring in new opportunities that are part of this new, what I like to call a post-COVID economy? And so, relationships with the private sector and looking at what are their needs and how can we meet them? We have, you know, the steel mill in Pittsburgh has a long tradition. It's been here for over 100 years. It's closing. There's somebody or a group that's going to be buying the property, and how are they going to use it, and how can policy help them, but more importantly, help the city as a whole? And so, we have to look at spaces in Pittsburgh. How can they be repurposed? Look at new industries and new market sectors, and how do we attract them to Pittsburgh? Because the, you know, manufacturing or these ways that cities have worked in the past, they don't work post-COVID. Those jobs are not here. So, rather than hoping they come back, how do we attract the new type of business in Pittsburgh?
On the council, are you doing that already, and what could you be doing better?
Yeah. So, when we are thinking about different ways to improve our city, I would say one thing in particular is our youth practice have games outside the city. So, one thing that we have done is we have approved through three soccer fields. Those fields are multipurpose, so they can be football. You can have soccer or baseball on those fields, which is important so that the students can stay within Pittsburgh. The same thing with the gym. We improved the basketball gym with five courts. My boys are always practicing outside the city, and I hear from residents all the time, "I want my kids to be able to play here in the city." The other thing that we're looking at in terms of revenue is we have three hotels that's coming online for the city as well. So, when people do come to our city for those sports events, and if they're out of town somewhere like me and my family do, and we stay in another city, they'll be able to stay in Pittsburgh now because the hotel we have now is just not enough and is always full. Looking at in terms of business, things are different, and people aren't in buildings all the time. We see more pop-up shops. And just last Friday, one of the empty spaces that we had, we decided to have two of those pop-up shops that they usually have in the community to use that empty space. Those two businesses sell lotions and candles. They actually sold out last Friday just because so many people came in. But it's another way to utilize the space. Like, we have to think about, rent is too much. How other cities will use an empty space to have two or three businesses in one space to sell things, and then they can share that rent. We are looking at having pop-up events for those vendors as well, similar to other cities, so that they can also make money here in the city. We're aware of them, and we can go to their website, just attracting, you know, more people to business, but in a different, in a different way. And then, lastly, I think in terms of restaurants, I know they're doing DoorDash now with some of the food trucks. And so, you know, having more food trucks in the community actually really works out really well because the community enjoys coming out, you know, having dinner out at the food trucks and coming back. So, I think we just have to figure out those spaces and maybe move around the city with the food trucks. And then, my last concern would be our entertainment. We have a lot of people that go outside the city for entertainment. And so, just finding ways, you know, we can have more entertainment in our city. We have a beautiful California theater that is underutilized and just look forward to bringing more shows and performances down there as well.
The pop-ups is great for entrepreneurs, but what about the residents who are looking for jobs? I mean, right now, you have to move, you have to go to Concord or San Francisco to work. And we all know how Highway 4, how bad Highway 4 is. What are we doing to get the kind of jobs that people can work at in Pittsburgh?
Yeah. So, one of those things, and Wolf mentioned it a little bit here, is USS Posco is closing down. So, you know, that's about 700 jobs in the next couple of years that, good-paying jobs. They have a company that has been there for over 100 years. But the hopes is that with the new company that's coming in, they're creating these centers, like distribution centers, so that would bring, you know, 10,000 jobs because there'll be several distribution centers out there. Now, they may not be the same job as USS Posco, but it will be bringing jobs home. We have a tech park that was approved. That will also bring jobs to create that tech park as well. And then, those three hotels that I mentioned, that will also bring jobs to build those hotels and then to staff those hotels. So, we are looking at different ways that we are bringing job creation in the city.
Wolf, does that work? Does that help?
So, it definitely does create jobs. There's no doubt about that. The piece that's missing is careers. And so, how do we attract entrepreneurs and business owners and people that want to run their business within Pittsburgh? That's a segment that has been forgotten, not just by council, but I would say East County as a whole. You know, when we, if you want to create jobs, you need to have a business owner who has a business that needs employees. And so, the issue we're seeing is that more and more business owners are leaving the state because of taxes, policy, you name it, they're leaving. So, what can we do as a city to make this a place that they want to be here? And so, there's, you know, the entertainment, the quality of life is one aspect. The other is the policy around being a business owner. Is it attractive to be in Pittsburgh? Because when it comes time for, you know, youth sports or different groups that need donations, they go to the businesses. And so, if a business is not doing well, if they're just keeping the lights on, there isn't profit that then can be donated back to the community. So, we need to look at, how can we make Pittsburgh a place that entrepreneurs want to come, business owners want to set up shop, and work at setting up their businesses? But then also, what about, you know, doctors, lawyers, all the different professions? We don't have a lot of those currently in Pittsburgh. And so, how can we make it so that this is a place they want to be? Because at the, if you want to cut down traffic, the best and only way to reduce traffic is to keep people in place. So, you know, Chanelles was talking about the entertainment people leaving. Well, if the jobs and careers aren't there, people are going to have to commute. Doesn't matter what new diamond lane, super diamond lane, platinum lane, whatever nonsense wants to be created, they still have to leave. So, we need to set up zoning and policies that are attractive to the new types of businesses. We also need to create an environment where business owners, higher net worth individuals want to be in Pittsburgh so that they stay. You know, when we look at the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of our members, they don't live in Pittsburgh. They're, you know, they may be here, but they live somewhere else. We need to be a community where "I want to be there" is the motto. You know, city staff want to be there. Business owners want to be there. No more of this, "Oh, you're from Pittsburgh." It's, yeah, wow, you're from Pittsburgh. I was wanting to get there, but there's nothing available or whatever. So, that's the shift that needs to take place. The infrastructure is there. We just now need to capitalize on it and get things going to the next level.
Dion, if you win your election and you're on the council, what's the first thing you're going to do to realize the things that you just heard Chanelles and Wolf talk about?
Well, one of the first things I would do is I would just want to dig into the data and see what businesses we have here and spend some time with them to find out what their real issues are. I have a perception, and I've experienced this, like, we don't have a lot of data capabilities in our downtown area where there's lots of vacant land and there's redevelopment that we want to do. But if we can't move data, businesses can't come here and work. And so, I'm interested to know what we're going to be doing around that. I know that the city's been exploring it, but like, when is it going to happen? And then, it helps us figure out, when can we work with these businesses and really get them to come to our city? So, that's one of the concerns I have or focus areas for me. Like, what's the data capabilities as far as our infrastructure? And then, learning what the data looks like, how many businesses we have, what type they are. Do they know how to scale? Do they have the capabilities? So, I've done some work in supplier diversity, and a lot of that work is really helping businesses. We have lots of existing businesses in Pittsburgh that can't scale or they need some support. And so, that's a lot of the work that we do in the chamber. Wolf and I sit on the board together, and we work with businesses to figure out, what do you need so that you can scale? And it was really tough during the pandemic. And so, how do you help businesses that are existing stay? And then, how do you attract the new ones? What do they want in Pittsburgh? Is it really about the traffic? Is it about the data? Is it about, you don't think there's a workforce available? How do we bridge those gaps and bring people together so that they know there's, you know, there's skilled labor here to staff your business and help you run it? There's educated people if you need strategic, you know, people to support your business and your vision. Just making sure that we know what's available, looking at the data, because that, and then putting some context to it so you can actually create some plans to, you know, move us into the future.
Yeah. Angelica, your work with youth. I'm trying to figure out how your experience would help with the things you've just heard about bringing businesses here, keeping businesses here, creating career-type jobs.
So, my job is not only to protect youth within the court system. I'm also a business owner. And as a business owner, since we're talking about finance, it can either be a struggle, a real struggle, if you do it alone. But if you do it with support from your community, within your community. In my business, for example, I actually, when I went into business, I partnered with local nonprofits. That is the way to go. If Pittsburgh wants to thrive, first, we need to listen to our residents, right? I can research all I want. I can do, look at demographics. But I actually need to go and listen to the people that I'm actually wanting to serve. And if my small business owners are currently suffering within the city, I need to know why. And not every person is going to give me the same answer. So, if I go, for example, to my local nail salon, "Why are you struggling?" Well, maybe they don't have as much capacity as deploying their information online via social marketing. Well, maybe someone else from the city does, or maybe I do. So, if we actually work together as a community, we can actually help small businesses thrive. But it's all about listening and finding out what each business is struggling with. Now, I know there's a lot of talk about lack of diversity. Yes, Pittsburgh has a lot of lack of diversity. Our residents have to go to other cities, for example, to go to Hispanic events, right? We have Hispanic Heritage Month. We don't have a big event going on in Pittsburgh. Why? The question is why? Most of our residents are Hispanic, but we don't have that. And we have commerce that could be happening within our city. Go outside. So, these are small things that can be just tweaked here and there that can actually drive more commerce. And if we drive more commerce, going back to your question, how can I actually help youth? Well, if I have more financial ability to help my youth, right? Maybe I can open up more services for them to actually thrive in. But we can't do that if our finances are crappy right now. Now, my work as an attorney has led me to learn how to listen. We cannot help other people. We cannot help our youth if we do not listen to them. Listening is key in everything, but listening and actually putting our hands to work on their behalf.
What are these business owners and you've been talking to them, what are they telling you?
They're struggling. Like, I'm not going to sugarcoat anything. Pittsburgh is struggling as a whole. A lot of business owners still have language barriers, technology barriers. They have very little customers because if Pittsburgh residents per capita are earning $40,000 a year, they cannot go out to eat every week, maybe once in a blue moon. I grew up like that. I grew up in a poor household that we barely went out to eat. And when we did, it was a luxury. Why are we still there? It's my question. So, business owners are struggling because they don't have their own residents consuming from them. But what's even worse, we're not driving outside consumption either. Because again, we have a golf course that's non-operable. Downtown area, a lot of things are closed down. Why would I want to go to a place like that? So, if we want to change something, we need to change ourselves, kind of like our relationship, right? We can't expect a great person to come into our lives if we're not good ourselves. So, that's what they're telling me. They are struggling.
Chanelles, as a council member, do you hear what Angelica is saying? Are you aware of this, and what are you doing about it, if you are?
Yes. That's not what I'm hearing. When I talked to residents, I was just out in the community yesterday, and just for our council, our special council meeting on Monday, and some of the residents applying for the Community Advisory Commission. And, you know, they love and enjoy Pittsburgh. And it's not the negative, the negativity that, you know, we're kind of hearing right now. I mean, Pittsburgh residents, and if you're born and raised in Pittsburgh, you know, it's first thing, you bleed black and, you know, orange and black. Like, we love Pittsburgh, and that's all we want is the best for Pittsburgh. We have been working with the businesses. We, even during COVID, we were trying to look at plans with our businesses. And we had the Chamber, Wolf, as part of that, to talk about ways that we can help them get an online footprint. We do have businesses that still not online, that may not be on Yelp or that may not be doing DoorDash, which is getting, you know, a different type of service. We have to look at how people are receiving, you know, services now. It looks different from COVID, right? Like, you know, I don't have to go to the grocery store anymore. I can use Instacart. I mean, like you, Bob, what you're doing right now for people in our community right now. I'm just all seriousness, though. I mean, people are using Instacart, and, you know, we can, I can go to FoodCo. I could go to FoodCo that's in Pittsburgh, but I can use Instacart for that and make sure that they're still getting my business. The same with restaurants. I know there's a big tax when using DoorDash, but, you know, if you want people to patronize, that's another way to patronize. And we talked about ways of maybe having something local. I know some cities have a local delivery company so that there's not that type of tax. And that's something I think that we should look into so that people are using restaurants in Pittsburgh and eating in Pittsburgh. But I don't feel like all of our residents are struggling. I feel like, you know, they are thriving. I hear about residents eating outside of the community or going shopping outside of the community before they get to Pittsburgh. And so, we need jobs that are in Pittsburgh so people can spend more time with their family and spend more time in our community as well. And so, you know, the hope is that with our business community, we continue to work, you know, to bring more jobs, and then we can move forward at having business in our community. So, I just don't hear that negativity about the city when I'm out and about. It might be entertainment. I wish there was a coffee shop that stayed open late so I can do studying. I wish there was more restaurants that I have more choices to choose from. I wish there was more restaurants on all four corners of our community to focus on. But, you know, those are things that they talk about that they would like us to work on. Now, in terms of the community events, what I hear from our community that they love it when we have a community event because the community comes together. And that's something a lot of cities do not have. And so, it's almost like a family reunion when you have a community event here in Pittsburgh.
So, the comments that Angelica made may not be negative comments that you take them because she may be talking to different people than you are. Dion, you talk about data, and you've heard about some of the things, companies that aren't on the internet. How does your expertise in data solve that problem?
Well, just looking at the way people use data and then making it available to businesses. And like Chanelles said, and, you know, working on the chamber, we do find that there are a lot of companies and businesses that are still using fax machines and different things like that. And so, create, growing their awareness about it, training them how to use it, giving them resources so that they can, you know, have those things available to them. And then, you know, data is also demographics. How much money do people make? What do they spend it on? So, you know what types of businesses to try to attract for them, what's important to them? You know, what are their priorities? Are they investing in education? Are they investing in... Are they investing in real estate? Whatever it is that they're doing. But you want to know what people are interested in and what they're doing with their money so that you can determine how you can meet their needs. And so data can tell us a lot of different things about that. But then the other part is budget. You know, what can you do with what you have? And how do you make the most impact with it? Some things are are easy wins and some things take more time. And so looking at what you have available and sort of having a long term and a short term plan for those things. And also having some transparency around it, telling people, this is what we know. This is what we're planning to do. This is our plan and working that plan. And if you pivot, let people know, like share and say, you know, we thought we needed, you know, I'm making this up, we needed a football field down on the Marina. Well, it turns out that we don't because we learned that our residents don't like driving down there to get to the football field. Okay, do we need the football field still? And if we do, where do we put it? But when you look at data and you talk to people and look at what they're they want and the demographics and what you're trying to create, it can help you make the city what you want it to be, but also what you want the city to be.
Do they not want to drive down there because there's no parking? I'm just just asking.
I'm I'm totally, I'm totally making it up.
I I know you are, but I but I'm usually when people don't want to drive someplace is because there's no place to park.
It's that or traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually.
So Wolf, Dion mentioned, um, collecting the data on what people are spending their money on. Doesn't the chamber already do that?
We do. And so the hard part with collecting consumer spending data is that most of the companies that aggregate that data are aggregating it from credit card companies. That's how they track your transactions. I mean, we could talk about crypto and all that and getting rid of a cash society. But when you have people that are spending with cash, that is a transaction you can't track. And so if you have, uh, I would say in our community, we have an above average amount of people that are using cash for their transactions. So the the data is not complete. But what the data does tell us is that people are spending money. It's just not always in Pittsburgh. And part of that is they don't realize that when I buy something online, depending on the site, those tax dollars may not get to Pittsburgh. But they don't, they don't know that. They don't know that they're actually hurting our economy by doing that. And so there's the educating the consumer, let them know how you can still quote unquote spend local in a world that is not local anymore. We're a global society. So how can you make it so that your tax dollars still come here? The other one, you know, talking about, uh, small businesses, you know, Michael Gerber and the E-Myth Revisited, classic, classic book. Are businesses struggling because they're in Pittsburgh? Or are they struggling because they are the quintessential example of the E-Myth? And that they were told, hey, you make great pies. You ought to open up a business. Yeah, yeah, let's do it. So they open up a pie shop and then they realize, holy cow, there's this payroll stuff. There's insurance, there's regulations, there's all that. And then they're like, oh, my gosh, and then the business is gone. And what happens is on the outside, people start realizing, man, maybe Pittsburgh's not a place to bring my businesses because we have these white elephant locations where it's just one after another. And it's not because it's Pittsburgh, it's because we have a lot of people that have a dream. They want to be an entrepreneur and they make really good fill in the blank or they sell really good fill in the blank, but they don't know all the other pieces. Everybody wants to learn, but people usually don't want to be taught. And so if I were to say there's an issue with small businesses in general, we have a lot of people that want to have the next ten X, you know, business. They don't know how to get there, but they don't want to be taught because that, maybe they feel that as a weakness. So as going back to how, well, how does the city council help with that? It's not government's job to solve everybody's problems. The government's job is to clear the way. So as a city council, how can we find the right organizations and partner with them and make it easy for them to do their work? You know, one of the topics that comes up with businesses is what are you going to do about the homeless? Well, here's the answer. It is not a city council that can just fix homelessness. But as a council, can we find people who are having success, that they can prove the success? How can we help them do more and stay out of their way? You know, you know, everybody wants the city to do everything for them. It's not city's job to do everything. It's not the city's job to raise your kids, clean your yard, pick up your trash, all those things. It's to create policy that allows the right people to do their job and do their job well. So that's, that's that.
Angelica.
Yes, sir.
Wolf just mentioned the fact that they found that a lot of people, uh, are not using credit cards. They're using cash. Uh, I'm I'm making an assumption based on your background that you can appreciate that.
That I can appreciate that.
The people are using, are spending cash and not credit, not using credit cards. They may not have credit cards.
Right. Well, a lot of this stems to to one of my topics, which is to improve financial literacy within our within our economy. And what is the best place to start that with a grade school level? But I think also because we have a lot of older adults living in Pittsburgh, we have people from different nationalities that are really accustomed to using cash. If you come from Mexico, for example, um, and this is my own family members, they like to use cash because in Mexico, we have a very corrupt system. They don't like to put money in the banks for the same reason. However, if we want to improve that from the city, we need to create some literacy for them available in their language and and distribute it at places they actually go to. Or else information will never reach them if we want to improve that area.
Not just information, but it's got to be information they can understand. I'll tell you a story. We talk about diversity and I remember having a conversation with somebody who, um, they were in Florida and the company had this soap powder that was very common, commonly used in Cuba.
Right.
Um, but they, nobody was buying it. And one of their employees who was, had a Cuban background said, yeah, well, because the instructions are in English. And, you know, my, my, my grandmother can't read it. They changed it to into to Spanish and it flew off the shelves. It's things like that, it's the disconnect when it comes to DEI that people don't get.
That's exactly my point. We have predominantly Hispanic community, Asians, blacks, you name it in Pittsburgh. We are a very diverse place. However, we are not connected. A lot of the people I have talked to and growing up, a lot of people feel like they have no voice and they have no part in the decisions that the city is making. And that is just a sad reality, right? I I talk to people, a lot of people still want to go to shopping centers to to buy things physically, right? A lot of people want a more decent shopping center to buy their groceries. That is a basic need that our residents should have. And so if going back to the to the subject of of using cash versus credit card, I don't really foresee that as being such a huge issue. However, we are in an age where we can even use our youth to empower them to actually want to go and help people that are not currently using electronic devices to pay for their stuff or to learn how to use Uber or Uber Eats. Um, touching on on Wolf's subject on homelessness, a lot of the homeless struggle a lot with being able to to find transportation. You know, a lot of them want to work, but they have no means of transportation. They don't, they don't even know how to use Uber. They obviously wouldn't have money in that account. But maybe as a city, these are little things that maybe we can start helping others out to empower them to actually help themselves, right? We we can only do so much, like Wolf said. But if we change these little, little, little things, like financial literacy available in the language of origin and actually having someone to give you a hands-on tutorial, these are things that could change. Because, you know, like my grandma always said, when there's, when, when, when there's a will, there's a way.
Yeah, you talk about financial literacy and and your point about people using cash as opposed to, you know, electronic credit cards. I shudder to think about having my son at the age of eighteen with a credit card. We all know it will happen.
Right.
Um, changing the subject a little bit, Chanel, Wolf mentioned this earlier that, you know, California wants people to buy electric vehicles, um, which, you know, for some people, that's not affordable. So what do we do? You know, we want to reduce our our footprint, our footprint on on for climate change. How do we get there? Because like, not everybody can afford electric, even a hybrid or even a new car. What do we do?
Well, first, we have to start looking at different modes of transportation. And so I think with COVID, um, you know, people decided that they're not going to use public transportation. Um, and we're not back at our levels with public transportation as of right now. Um, I sit on the Tri Delta Board, um, and so people aren't using buses still. They're all on the road. Um, but we have to, um, somehow get them back and encourage them that, you know, this is how we reduce our carbon footprint. Um, this is how we get people off the road. Um, in the city, we are looking at, you know, ferry service as, uh, one of those means of transportation to get over to the city. Um, and having a stop perhaps in Oakland or San Francisco and other cities along the northern waterfront are looking at doing the same thing, not just ours. Um, but I think that's, that's one way to do it. Um, I, I've been debating whether or not to get a car that's an electric car as well because it's so expensive. And now with the governor, um, giving us a date when, um, these cars are going to be, um, in place and we won't have gas cars anymore, we need to switch over. Um, it's something that we have to look at ways, well, are they going to reduce it? The car companies reduce the price by twenty thirty-five? Um, so it could become more affordable. Um, you know, or what's going to happen? Or there, or we're going to look at ways that there's bigger rebates because the rebates are not that great, um, right now. Um, so, you know, those are things, you know, and the city can't, you know, cover the the cost of that of a huge rebate, um, to make sure everyone is in an electric vehicle. Um, but it's something that, you know, we have charging stations in our city. Um, we're looking at more, um, as we move forward. But the price of the vehicles, um, I think is that's the, that's a shock for all of us that, you know, we have to do something about, yeah.
Yep. When the governor said no more gas vehicles, I'm thinking, didn't he mean gas only? In other words, wouldn't a hybrid still be okay?
So my understanding is that the governor wants to not only get rid of gas vehicles, he wants to get rid of small gas engines. So that takes, you know, your yard care equipment, generators, all that stuff magically is going to get replaced and allow people to continue. We'll see. I think the problem is that there is no plan. And when you look at bringing that, because we can't control the state, right? At the city, making sure when we want to do something, have we looked at the whole plan? And have we looked, how can this have provide, what unintended consequences will this have ten years down the road? So you want to have electric vehicles? Great. Where are we going to plug them in? Oh, yeah, I didn't think of that. These things cost a fortune. Oh, yeah. The batteries only last so long and then they're toxic and we got to dump. Oh, yeah, I forgot that part. So whatever it may be, we, you have to have a plan. The the reality is we are not going all electric. You got fire trucks, you have police vehicles, you have all these other, uh, vehicles that need reliable, consistent, long range. And so we have to look at more than just electric. There's hydrogen, there's biodiesel. The Pittsburgh Unified School District has electric buses, but they also have a huge fleet that run on propane and biodiesel. There are lots of other ways to reduce carbon footprint other than the electric vehicle model. How can businesses change their operations to reduce energy consumption? I know PG&E doesn't, they say that, but they sell electricity, so they, you know, do different things. Um, but one of the things that they do do is they provide, uh, classes and training to restaurants on how to be more energy efficient to reduce their their energy consumption. So there are lots of ways that the goal is reducing carbon footprint. It's pretty myopic to just say electric vehicles. So there's lots of different things that can be done.
Yeah, I can't imagine me having to get rid of my hybrid because, you know.
I'm not getting rid of my diesel truck.
Well, you know, the the hybrid, I think is a good example because you do have, they have to make the batteries better because I get twenty-five miles on a charge and then it's the gas engine. PG&E, you, I guess you love the fact that people have to use electricity, um, to 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 charge their vehicles. But when it comes to climate change, PG&E has a lot of programs in place, I think, that is helping that. How can you as a council member help implement some of those things in the city of Pittsburgh or is it already being done?
Well, we're doing a number of things at PG&E, but first off, we don't make money off the electricity that we serve, um, that we provide to our customers or the gas. And, um, we are working to build out infrastructure throughout the state of California. Our goal is to reduce the strain on the grid so that everybody, when they hit a switch, it comes on and it's reliable. Um, there's nothing worse than being afraid when you have, when you have a school, you know, you have an outage and kids are sitting in the dark. And so what we do in our energy efficiency space is, um, it's all about education and shifting behavior and that takes time. And so, um, I worked years ago when we were going through market transformation and getting people to shift to use energy efficient products. So those rebates that you got in the store on your lights and your washing machines and things like that, that all started in DC with some policymaking and working with different folks to set standards and then make products that are energy efficient. And then we partnered to say, um, we'll work with the customers to educate them about how to use things. So when you get those things on your phone that says, don't run your air conditioner at this time because of the strain on the grid, that's a way that we're shifting behavior so that the grid is not strained. And so we're working to do our part to reduce our carbon footprint and use more renewables and bring them online so that we don't strain the grid. And you can have your electric vehicles and have the infrastructure. So if you go downtown for dinner, plug your car in. So it's coming.
I was looking for a place to plug my car in outside. I couldn't find one. So to to your point, last, last couple of weeks, very hot. We had the flex alerts. But my understanding is because of the renewable energy we have in the system, we didn't have to actually do any blackouts. And I think that's a great thing.
That's correct.
We've got a couple of minutes left, so this is going to be kind of off the grid. Tell me something the the voters don't know about you.
That the voters don't know about me? I am very pro mental health, to the T. I think a lot of our issues within our community, family violence, our youth committing suicide because we need to talk about the ugly too collectively as a society. And this is not just our city, it's, it's all over. Mental illness is at a rise and why are we not addressing it? If we want more motivation from our residents, from young adults to our teenage boys and girls, to to our single moms in our city, to everyone within our city. We want motivation from them. We need to address mental illness.
I meant something fun.
Something fun. Well, that is something fun to me. Like I said, my story is pure testament that things can be turned around. If you asked me eight years ago, sitting in a mental health hospital, if I was gonna ever make it here, I would have never believed it. Eleven-year-old me never believed it.
Great.
But that is my story.
Thank you. Chanel.
Something fun.
That people don't know.
That people don't know. I enjoy going to the rock climbing gym. That's something fun. Um, I think something that people don't know is just my true passion and commitment um, to public service. Um, if I wasn't on city council, I'll be doing the same thing. Uh, because every day, that's something that's rewarding to me, is to be able to help others. So, you know, I think you don't do this job because you're looking for the limelight. You're not doing it for the money, definitely. Um, you doing it for your community and what you love about it. And for my community, they really invested in me. And so that's why I'm doing what I love to do.
Um, I love to cook. I like to backpack, long walks on the beach. I was kidding. Um, uh, yeah, I I love the outdoors and, uh, that's where I rejuvenate myself and I love spending time with my kids and my wife.
Dion?
I love music. I love all kinds of music. I think music connects people. And, um, for me, something that people don't know is I am an empath. I care about people and I care about, um, the condition of their heart so that they can, so I can meet their needs. And so if I served on city council, that's what I would be doing.
And you're an AKA. And you're a gator.
That's right.
As am I.
Yay, go Gators.
I want to thank our candidate for answering some of these very important questions. Each candidate now has two minutes to make a closing statement. Angelica, you're up.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob, for everything. I just want to tell the residents of Pittsburgh that my main three focus will be, whether I win or not, will be to up our financial status that we currently have, whether that be with small businesses, empowering them more. Also, creating more job opportunities by creating more trade tech jobs within our city. We are at a time and place where we need to empower our residents to to learn new skills. skills. Another big area will be the area of mental health. Like I mentioned before, domestic violence is on the rise, our youth are not thriving like they should. And it breaks my heart when I see a 12-year-old without any ambition or motivation to even go to, to their class, right? Because collectively as a city, we're not, we're not offering that. And I also want to see less homelessness within, within our city by providing actual resources. And last but not least, I want you to know that I will never sugarcoat anything, but I will always listen to you. But I think that together, we could strategize because we each have our own genius that we can all utilize to make our city better. It will not be overnight. We will not take our 11% poverty rate to 5% overnight. But if we can diminish it little by little instead of increasing it, then we will get somewhere. Y también quiero agradecer a todos los que estén viendo en español. Quiero decirles que soy muy orgullosa de que mis padres emigraron a este país y me, y me dieron la habilidad de poder yo tener una educación y no ha sido fácil. Pero quiero que todos los que estén viendo voten porque todos nos merecemos un lugar en la mesa. Y si no hay una silla, la construimos con el sudor y trabajo que nosotros conocemos. Entonces, para la comunidad hispana in Pittsburgh, por favor voten y participen más si quieren un cambio en nuestra ciudad. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Chanel.
Yes, thank you, Bob, and I thank you CCTV and the League Women Voters for hosting this roundtable today. I just want our voters to know that I truly appreciate them for electing me, um, into office in 2018. It has been a blessing, um, to serve the residents of Pittsburgh and I wish to continue to do so, um, for this upcoming November. I look forward to continuing to work together to uplift our community and improve the quality of life, um, and doing that through our, um, public safety, uh, working with our police department to ensure that our community is safe, um, looking at ways of affordable housing and helping our unhoused, um, community. One of the things I'm really proud of that we've been able to do is to ensure that we have a shower program for our unhoused community and have a core team just for the city of Pittsburgh, um, to make sure our unhoused community have resources, um, that they need. Also looking forward to, um, continue the youth services, um, program. We have dedicated over $3 million to our youth services, um, and we have a youth center that's opening back up, um, starting in January, the Marina Center, that's been closed for 20 years and look to having programs and services, um, for our seniors as well. So I want to continue to work with our community to continue to move Pittsburgh forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chanel.
So to the residents of Pittsburgh, I know that there's a lot of choices that you have. And I may not look like you, I may not sound like you, but it doesn't mean I can't understand where you come from and work on your behalf to make space for you in Pittsburgh. For me, making sure that residents have a clean, safe, and prosperous place to raise their family. And family can look all kinds of different ways, but that, that's the goal that I have. I have a family of six, my wife and I, we chose to live in Pittsburgh. I chose to put my kids in public education in Pittsburgh. I was a school teacher, I know how, you know, the game is played and how to, to maneuver things on their behalf, but I don't. Even my son, you know, uh, is in special needs, making sure that he gets what he needs. We still, you know, we go through that and I, I understand the fight and the struggle. I understand to our business owners how hard it can be that when you tell people that your business is in Pittsburgh, that, that may or may not affect sales, it may not affect them wanting to come to you, but for some it does. I understand that. And I also understand that as residents of Pittsburgh, that we have pride in our community, that there are lots of areas of Pittsburgh that may not necessarily feel like they are part of Pittsburgh. We have a whole west side of town that, you know, is new, hasn't really built its culture yet. How do we all come together? So as you get ready to vote, I ask for your vote humbly because I understand that there are choices that you have. But I promise you that I will work hard, that I will put my talent and my energies to your behalf and making sure that when you tell people that you're from Pittsburgh, not only can you say it with a smile, that you're proud to say that, and that's what a vote for Wolf will do for you.
Thank you, Wolf. Dion?
Thank you, Bob. Um, to our residents of Pittsburgh, um, I pledge my commitment, my passion and my pride of our city of Pittsburgh, coupled with my skills and experience, um, to deliver public policy, to think of our residents, and also think about the many friends and family that have raised me, being part of a fourth-generation family here in Pittsburgh. I have so many fond memories of things that were available to me as a child that we still have some of those remnants here and we have some that have gone away. And as our city changes and we have new residents that are moving here and we have those that have been here for many years, there's a place where we can come together and grow our city. We need to move Pittsburgh forward. And so my commitment is to be here to help Pittsburgh move forward, to address our housing needs that we have, um, for our changing demographics, for to support our unhoused population that are here that need resources and support, to improve public safety and continue working with our police department that we have a great relationship with, who's very transparent and works closely with our council. I want to continue that partnership and to also look at ways that we can make the city better, what's actually happening and really get intentional about that. And then I want to, uh, help improve our infrastructure, to improve the growing needs of our city as it's growing, and then also to bring businesses here that can provide local jobs so that Pittsburgh is a place that you can be proud to work, live, and play in. So please vote for me on November 8th.
Thank you. This concludes our form of candidates running for the city council for the city of Pittsburgh. Once again, the five candidates are running for three positions. They are Dion Adams, Wolf Kroski, Chanel Scales-Preston, Angelica Lopez, and Sonia Shepherd, who was not here. For more in-depth information on the candidates, ballot measures, and who supports them, go to votersedge.org. The last year to register for the election is October 24th. All eligible registered voters in Contra Costa County will receive a mail-in ballot for the November 8th general election. You can find detailed information on the upcoming election on Contra Costa County Elections' website, cocovote.us, cocovote.us. I'm Bob Butler at KCBS Radio. Thank you for watching and don't forget to vote on November 8th.